Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? No, nothing there. Let's see, we have an executive session for real estate, personnel, real estate matters, and legal matters, and economic development.
Mr. President, I'm going to go into executive session for the above mentioned items.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries, we're in executive session. (noise) Okay, we're out of executive session, and do I have a motion for the appointment of the interim sheriff for Berkeley County?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I want to say first, the past few months has been a difficult time for our county. Before I make a motion, I would like to extend my appreciation to my fellow commissioners, as well as to Gary and our administrative staff, for their leadership in creating the process and following the process to where we are today, in selecting a new sheriff. I am proud to have been involved. On behalf of our community, I want to offer my sincere appreciation for the eight residents who applied, and a special thanks to the three that were interviewed this past Tuesday. I was moved at times by some of their comments. After a great deal of thought, deliberation, and tremendous consideration, as to what path would be best for our community, I would like to make a motion to appoint Rob Blair as our next sheriff to fulfill the remaining unexpired term that will end December 31st, 2024.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes, sir, I'd like to second that motion, sir.
Any further discussion? And again, I would also like to thank all the candidates that came in, that we selected to interview, as well as all the ones that put in their applications for it, it was greatly appreciated, and their willingness to help serve this county. And with that being said, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Tell them about the swearing in.
Oh, yep, we will have a swearing in here tomorrow, correct? At 9:30 a.m. for the new sheriff, and all companies welcome to come in and participate in our, this event for Berkeley County. So, see everybody at 9:30 tomorrow.
It could be a weather situation.
It could be a weather situation as well.
If there is an inclement weather that we have to kick in a policy, we will do it as soon as possible. We have a promise from the county administrator that the doors will be open and we will have somebody here to take, take on that role to swear in. I will be here myself. Thank you all very much. Next on the agenda, any, well, let's see, going down here, approve of the agenda if there's no modifications or changes. We should have done that first, but now we had the executive session.
Mr. President, I make motion, we accept the agenda as presented today for January 18th, 2024.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Purchase order log. Any questions? Tracy's not here, but we'll forego any major questions, but I think we're all pretty good with the purchase orders, is that correct? Internal budget revisions. We have five today and Mr. Wine.
Three of which are from the David Port Center. The first one from Director Zaya to move 25,000 from his professional services line item to his contractual services line item. Number two for David Port Center is to move $10,000 from his training line item to his contractual to his line item. And then he would like to move $130,000 from his travel line item to his professional services line item. Should note that I actually owe him money in a budget revision to fulfill those obligations. He had some grant money come in that hasn't made it out of contingency over him, so we'll address those in the next budget revision. We've got two from the Sheriff's Department requesting to move 1,075 from material supplies to printing and then additionally move $4,309 from their court cost line item to their professional services line item, all of which are in their budget.
Question, Mr. Administrator.
Yes, sir.
On the third one for Tim Zaya, did I hear you say 130,000 or you meant to say 130?
I meant to say 130,000.
Okay, that might have been my mistake of hearing too, but okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, sir, 130,000.
Okay. Alrighty, you've heard the budget revisions. That's in the consent agenda, we don't need a motion yet. Alrighty, we have a change in status. New hire recommendation received from Gary Wine, County Administrator for Alicia Clinton as a part-time scanner for the hourly rate of $17.83. That's effective January the 19th, 2024.
What is a part-time scanner?
So, if you don't know, you have a room, the mechanic commission has a room on their cleaning floor filled with paperwork that's probably 30 years old that will soon be shredded. I think it's digitized at first and it's pennies on the dollar for us to do it internally. We've done it over and over and over.
What kind of documents?
It can be anything from terminated employee records, it could be notes from meetings, a lot of it. Some will just get shredded and not scanned like copies of purchase order logs. That's the clerk's responsibility. So, pictures that used to hang on walls, that take a digital copy of them and they don't have a place, they'll move on in life.
They'll be in a cloud.
Administrative files that you aren't statutory or required to keep minus employee records, but if you want to have.
Well, it's nice for a historical aspect, in case somebody wants to write a history of the Berkeley County Commission.
We'll give Matt access to all the records.
He can take them home with him. Just kidding, sorry Matt, if you're watching. I have a change in status received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for Douglas Webb. He is receiving a salary increase due to taking on additional responsibilities. His salary will go from $50,676 to $60,676. That's effective January the 1st and that's all we have there in change of status. Need a motion to approve the minutes. Everybody was present, so we'll just leave them in the agenda. Alrighty, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moves, sir.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Correction of assessment logs, Honorable Larry Hess from our assessor's office. Tell us some good, some good news, bad news, any news?
Not a whole lot of news, but just got one thing.
Cold?
It is cold. Terrible cold. This one, I think you're familiar with. We brought this to you, I think, a week or so ago. This is for Mr. and Mrs. Wiegand, I think that's the way you pronounce that, Wiegand. Anyway, we, he, they filed in Jefferson County and they filed in Berkeley County. You remember, we talked about that?
That was taxpayer error.
It was a taxpayer error, but she contacted the Board of Assessment of the Board of, in Charleston and made an appeal. So, we had a, we had a conference, phone conference with Anthony and the offices in Charleston. We found other evidence that last year she wrote on her return that she was moving to Jefferson County.
Okay.
So, the decision was that we would just let it go because we found that additional information. So, this is kind of a reverse. We just go to reverse that taxpayer error to a regular exoneration.
Alrighty.
For Mr. and Mrs. Wiegand for $317.34.
Alrighty, do I have a motion to approve the personal tax exoneration?
I make a motion.
For correction of, from personal to office error?
It was office error, we're just reversing it to the.
From taxpayer to office error in the amount of 317.34.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Two of those, alrighty. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries, sir. That's it.
So, we'll have. Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, sir, I attended the Main Street meeting by Zoom this week. Walked down there and the door was locked. Called and found out it was on Zoom, so we did a Zoom meeting and so, a few, few things going on. They have a new president. Heidi Crawford is the new president over there. Chelsea Davis has resigned from the board, she's no longer on the board. They did the new signees for the bank accounts and they discussed some of their interests and budget requests. They are having a awards dinner, 7:00 p.m. Monday, the 29th. They did some discussions about upcoming events with, like the wine festival and different things. There was some, with the new ABC inspector, was some issues with how the wine festival runs, so we had some discussion about, speaking with legislation about trying to get some of those laws changed up a little bit because they're a little ridiculous and old and, you know, you can sell by the glass but not by the bottle and if you sell them a bottle, they have to take it to their car, they can't open it there at the festival. There's a lot of technical stuff that really hurt the festival last year because the ABC came in and was very strict and by the rules and, you know, so they're working with legislation to get some of that worked on and they're working on some new promotional ideas and then also they talked about the garage is opening on the 27th, ribbon cutting on the 27th at 11:00 a.m. About the bulk of things.
Very good. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I want to note the passing of Donnie Bear. He died a couple of days ago, former county commissioner and realtor and all-around good guy. I always liked Donnie, he was an honest guy, you know, of the three Bear Boys, always liked Donnie the best, but you know.
Calvin, Calvin, the sheriff was his father.
Yes, and Buzz and Doug were his brothers and I got along with all of them and, but Donnie will be missed. He was, he was a good fella.
He was.
And hate to see him go. The only meeting I had, what was, the Honorable Steve Catlett, was the MPO meeting. Not much was accomplished. I'll let Steve get into it. They had like 30 transportation improvement plans, but most of them were just changes in, you know, year and amounts and the stuff like that. Yeah, so that was my meeting and it was pretty routine.
Okay. Mr. Catlett?
We did have that meeting yesterday on Wednesday. Elaine Bartleson was the vice president, she's now the president of that. And we have some new members, of course, Paul Bun was on there for years, has now been replaced by Andy Blake. The gentleman that's a past president is from Washington County retiring in June, so he's going to be leaving. So, some changes there.
Well, tell them about your Tier One.
Well, as I think you all know, the Tier One project was selected several months back. This MPO is Route 9 West from Martin to Hedgesville in particular and we are working hard to get attention so that funding will come our way to address that issue and as well as hopefully some help with X-12, so we'll be hard on that. I also wanted to mention that on Sunday evening, I attended for the second year the Martin Luther King Scholarship Dinner at the Holiday Inn. It is a really, really nice event set next to HD and I give a lot of credit to the folks that organize that event each year. They give out about approximately 12 thousand-dollar scholarships to students, needy students in this community, county, and it's a great event. Anthony was there with his wife as well, Judge Redding was there. So, the elected officials were well represented there at that particular event and it's a wonderful event. Also, I was on our, on our Tuesday morning, the four-hour session, and they mostly talked about the sheriff selection process and then we got into, of course, some legislative issues and the 1% sales tax and all that as well, but I hope that went very well, so.
Very good. Mr. Coconut?
Yes, sir. Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the two troopers, Trooper Bean and Trooper Special that was held at Hedgesville and I wanted to publicly thank every fire and EMS agency in the county that participated and contributed to that successful afternoon.
Well, they all, all were there, weren't they?
Everyone. Every, every department was represented, you know, the paid and the volunteer, they all worked together, it was, it was nice to see. I went there to help and quite honestly, they didn't need my help, they had plenty of help, so it was, it was a good time just to catch up with folks, but I just really want to thank them and please everybody continue to keep, keep troopers bean and special in your, in your prayers. I was not able to attend the park and rec meeting on Tuesday morning, but they did appoint Mr. Joe Burton as the executive director of the parks and rec. So, they've got high hopes for him to be able to, especially from a maintenance perspective, to be able to keep everything up nice and as we would want it to be. And also spoke with Jennifer this morning and she wanted to make sure that David Deema with Region Nine was very instrumental in getting West Virginia Ready Grant and that grant will be used for extending the trails at Port House Farm Park.
David's a good guy.
Yes, he is. And they've also requested their, they submitted their funding request, I guess this Friday to be submitted. Also, yesterday, the Criminal Justice Board, there's a lot of numbers floating, they get float through that meeting and they currently have 243 people on home confinement and they have a 70% completion rate with that, between what the court takes out and some of them that actually, you know, just, just fail on the system itself, but a 70% success rate there. And each, each officer that we have is operating 15 to 20 persons per officer. On the drug screen side of things, last year they did 21,537 drug screens through that office and, and with the, with the day report and the home confinement and all that stuff, it, it saves the Berkeley County taxpayers approximately $2.4 million in jail fees.
I assume when you say 70%, that means the other 30% finish their term in the slam?
Well, some finish and some get pulled out of the system because they failed their test either by the court or, or some just choose not to participate, so then they end up back in the system, so.
I had the option, I'd do home confinement every time.
But, you know, it's, it's just the way life is.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Okay, I had a Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday night.
How'd that go?
It went well. It was, it was very well attended and audience participation, it was good. The two hot topics were the Dollar General in Arden and the, for the sketch plan advancement, it was, it was tabled until further information was supposed to be looked into for the historical preservation area of that.
Was the public hearing closed or the public hearing extended?
It was closed. And then the, the second one was Clover Hill. That was, there was a lot of, oh, how can I put it, Eddie? Disagreement with the, the advancement of that. It did move on then to a sketch plaid advancement.
Yeah, that, that kind of surprises me because of the water issue.
Well, they're, they have drilled their own wells and then now they're into the study of their hydrological.
That is going to cost some major bucks to develop that as a community water.
Yes, it will be to.
It's going to be very expensive.
To provide water for that, that amount of residents.
To get a public water supply permit from the state of West Virginia is, you've got to jump through some serious hoops.
Yes, you do, because you are going to be liable for everything they drink and use, that's for sure, so good luck for that. And then the, actually, there was a total of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight public hearings and the other ones were just mostly uneventful, there wasn't any, any opposition on them, they were just regular routine. Some were given, there was a couple waiver requests that, that weren't given and a couple that were. And then at the end, there was one preliminary plat approval for the Dollar General at Hedgesville Road. That was, I think that's pretty much underway anyway, so. And that was all that I had, so.
That was enough.
Yes, it was. It was, it was a lengthy meeting. Eddie, you probably enjoyed your time off, didn't you?
Actually, I watched it.
Did you watch it? Okay.
I was in tune.
Yeah, I'm good, alrighty.
Saying, I'm glad you, not me.
You know, I've got to say, it's nothing I didn't expect. I mean, you know, we've all sat through some controversial public hearings and, you know, they.
As far as Clover Hills, Jim, the way I understand it, the State Health Department has to approve this water system.
Yes, sir, and good luck.
With, with federal backing, you know.
Is that the one off Welltown?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a major undertaking.
It is.
And it's only going to last a couple of years before the water district will have the water tank put in because they already got the ground.
That's my biggest concern is that when we do things like that, it always ends up coming back to our districts to take care of it later.
Yeah, and, you know, plans are underway to put the.
It bothers me a lot.
Put the pressure tank in, they got the ground and, you know, the engineering has started and, you know, they couldn't wait.
You know, one thing, and I've said this before in private, the Planning Commission, you know, is a body that every, you know, anybody that wants to do a development or wants to, you know, improve a piece of property or undertake anything, we're there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie, we're, we're there to make sure that it's done accordingly to, you know, the, the code and regulations.
The ordinance.
And the ordinance. Once a developer has, you know, checked off all those boxes and gotten all the approvals, it's, it's very difficult for us to, to turn them down.
You're required to approve it.
We are required.
Checks up all the boxes.
And, you know, the minute that we, even though they've checked off all the boxes and the minute that we say anything that says, no, we're not going to approve it, well, you end up in court and you lose almost every time. Am I correct in that? Anthony?
That's correct. The main power of the commission would be to modify the ordinance itself.
Right.
Once it's there, if the project meets everything, all the standards.
And, and that ordinance is a, is a living document. It is always modified, it is always. And, and that ordinance is, is a living document. It is always modified. It is always looked at. And it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not taken lightly, you know, and I, and I just, you know.
Well.
And I, I'll give credit to our engineering department and our staff over there, because they do take a lot of flak, you know, on, on things that happen in this county. And it's, and it's not so much that it's, it's not their fault.
Well, regarding the Dollar General store, you know, the item that came up, nobody knew about.
Nobody knew about. And, and that was, that was the biggest reason for tabling it until, you know, the, the setbacks were met if you were near a historical piece of property. But being that that whole causeway through there is part of the historical, historical, historical part, then it all has to have a setback. If I'm, if that's what, you know, I read correctly in the, in the legal aspect of it. So if those answers, questions can be answered and, and they find that it's, it's not part of it, then the next step, it'll come back and, you know, it's been delayed for not an indefinite period of time, but it's been a delay and we'll make adjustments.
So there is a chance the Dollar General won't go in?
There is. And, and if it's related to the, to the value of the historical aspect of that area, then, you know.
Find another spot.
And that's the value of having that public hearing, you know, everybody, you know, I read comments from folks, you know, it doesn't matter, they want to do whatever they want to do. Public, public opinion does matter, but it was more than an opinion. It was, it was
It's factual.
Facts that they brought to the table that, that the planning commission recognized and valued those facts that, that were distributed. So, you know, you know, the, the board listened to what the public presented, not necessarily always what they said, but the factual presentation of that historic district has value, so.
Well, and a lot of, a lot of the public doesn't understand that we don't have control of that without zoning, you know, these neighborhoods and these developments.
You know, even, even if we had zoning, the only thing that would, let's say they, they went out there and they changed the facade of, of, of being a, a an institutional looking building and, and let's say they, they built it to, we had architectural zoning and they built it to look like a period piece of, of, of that district at another time, you know, then that's the aspect of that zoning that would make
For that store, but I, but I mean for like these large developments that are, that are getting thrown in everywhere. That, I think they're even more upset about that versus a store here or there.
Oh, yeah.
And, and you're right, you know, you go to some areas like Ashburn and things, you don't have a Dollar General that looks like a square box with a big sign in the front.
That's exactly right.
Fits the facade of the, of the, you know, shopping center or however that is built into the development, the community. But, but these big huge housing developments or lack thereof and nice houses, that, that's a big pushback. But, you know, and everybody calls and messages, well, how do we stop this? And it's like, well.
Yeah.
I guess you, you could have tried to stop the guy who sold the property to the developer, but
You know, that's
It's hard for us to do much.
You're right. And I understand, you know, that there's a large tract of land that, that a farmer has owned for, you know, 30, 40 years. And he's put a lot of his sweat into it.
And his children don't want to do anything with it.
Children don't want to do it anymore. And they found that, you know, the growth that we have, it's more conducive to his retirement by selling that property than it is to continue to farm it. And I can't blame him for that. I mean, you know.
They're under a lot of pressure.
They are. And so I'm, I'm just, you know, that, that's the idea of, of, you know, you own your property.
Which is exactly what happened to Norman Dillon.
That's it. That's right.
Dorthia didn't want anything to do with it.
Yeah. So, you know, the, the family has to think about themselves too, and I don't begrudge that. I mean.
I have served on the Public Sewer District Board this past year. The, the problem I see though is when developments come in and don't use public sewers within our own district, and they get these makeshift systems approved, then it's not us, but the state, whether it's DEP or whomever, doesn't follow up or monitor these places. And then they're malfunctioned, and then the residents that bought into those developments get the short end of the stick. And then the only choice they have is try to invest themselves with money they don't have to improve it. Or the bottom line is they come back to us then, the state, DEP, and, and the EPA, and expect us to take them over then and correct the mess. And they shouldn't be allowed in the first place.
Yeah, like Union, Union Corner comes to mind.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It happens way too often here.
At the time, it seemed like the, the perfect idea for the, for that, you know, for that instance. But as time goes, things change.
Well, 30, 40 years becomes obsolete or has to be totally replaced. Who's going to replace it?
Sometimes they don't even last that long.
No, but Union Corner is about 30, 35 years old, something like that.
All righty, well, anyway.
It wasn't, wasn't too good when it was put in.
I've said enough. So, thank you all for letting me vent a little bit. And let's see, that's the end of that. We don't have an honorary council person here this morning, so.
Vacancies.
We're going to move on to
You've got commission vacancies.
Commission vacancies. Do we have anything?
I don't know, but.
I have an appointment.
Okay.
We interviewed her a week or so ago, Gully Angle, and I'd like to motion to approve her to represent us on the Senior Service Board.
Does that exist?
It'll be a new term.
New term, okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Of course, you get Gully and you get Roger too.
Yeah.
Other thing, Jim, I, I don't know, I assume when we said we were going to continue, the boards were on, Region Seven sent me an email. That's the Region Seven Workforce Development Board that I've served on, and they want something in writing back from us that I've been reappointed. So if we could get the stamp to draft a letter and then, okay, and just Jim signs it, it's sent.
Will do.
Great, thanks.
Sure. Way ahead of us. All righty. Next we have CCAP Lowes and Fishes, Beverly Van Meter. Come on up and tell us about, well, you're going to give us your budget presentation. You're going to give us your budget presentation.
I am.
We're a little bit ahead of time, so we're going to keep you from
Well, we're lucky to be here considering the weather.
Yes, yes, we're all lucky to be here, even if it wasn't the weather.
That's right. You got that right.
Think half the battle was I woke up breathing.
Speak for yourself.
Well, yeah.
Well, I have these for you.
Thank you.
And if you want to take a note, most of what's in here, you can read for yourself.
Good morning. Thank you.
That's where he
I'll get it.
That's okay.
I've been knocked around before.
She said, she said, Eddie, you better approve this.
I thought you weren't present anymore.
I beg your pardon?
I thought you weren't present anymore.
Well, you know, I'm going to tell you all about that. They, they kicked me out.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
They did. Did you see our, did you see our article in the journal?
Yes.
That was a nice coverage, and that lady has been hired to do more with, in the community, so I think we'll all be seeing a little bit of coverage. We hope. Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank the county representatives and administrators, commissioners for the increase, that the extra funding that you gave us over and above what we had agreed on when I was here last year, that really helped us. So I'm going to get, can you all hear me without this?
I don't know if the world wide web can hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
We can hear you.
There's millions of people out there listening to every word you say.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
So what, I just want to give you a few highlights and specifically around our program for assistance with rental assistance to prevent homelessness. So at, as you may or may not know, in March, CCAP moved from St. Joseph's School. We were in the last of those bill, of the buildings of the old school. And we moved to the basement of the Otter Bay United Methodist Church. And that's been a really fine, it's worked out well. We had a lot of really good years at St. Joseph's, and I think they kind of drug their feet as, for their, they were trying to get on with their construction, and we were the last in the place. But they were very kind to us, always were, and now we have another similar setup. But it's much larger and somehow we're already starting to fill it up and talking about what if we need more storage space. But this is a really nice, it's a low rent from the church, and they're very accommodating to us. In November, we had the honor of being awarded the nonprofit of the year by the Martinsburg Berkeley County Chamber of Commerce. And that was, that was a big thrill for us. We think we deserved it, and evidently the business community thinks so too. Our largest challenge was an, an increase of 53% for services, for client services. So it, our client services in '23 grew more than, more than, more than half again. We also had we also had an increase in our county costs by 24% compared to 2018. We kind, some things we kind of look at in light of before pandemic and before pandemic. And we really are interested and we're getting more and more community participation. And I just want to make a few highlights from the, first of all, our total income for for our services was $590,117. We dispensed $150,529 pounds of food, and that was a 37% increase from '22. Our, we also have continued giving rental assistance, but we have had to tailor that because for quite a while now, we've been the only entity in the county that assists with rent in, in any amount that would be helpful. We have a ceiling of $800 per client, but of course, we only, they have to bring proof of, of what they're be, how they're behind and what they need. And then we collaborate with the landlord and we get, we get their permission, we get their agreement that they will take our voucher. And then they, they work with us pretty well. So we're really having, there, there just isn't any other source. DHHR lost its funding for rental assistance. And other entities who gave rental assistance, but much less than we do, have also kind of dried up. And I think the inflation has taken hold in some of those. So we had 266 families that we kept in their homes. Most of these people are not people who are chronically homeless, most of them have never even had to ask for rental assistance. And that's why our program works so well, because usually they have some kind of a crisis that causes them to get behind in their rent. The typical client that we serve is someone who has never had a problem paying rent, but an illness, maybe a layoff that was unexpected, and other kinds of problems come up. And they, if they have a landlord who's willing to work with them and accept our voucher, it does one of two things. It either takes care of the problem, or it allows the people to not be summarily evicted and gives them a month's time to make other arrangements that are affordable. In both cases, that prevents people from being unhoused. So I would like to make an appeal to this group to see what you can do, if you can give us any increase. You can see from where our fin, where our funds come from. We think we are doing a good job with this and have, have, we're filling a niche that really isn't filled in any other way in the county. So any questions?
Where, where does your food come from?
Oh, good, good question. Don't, don't forget we're talking about rent.
Yeah.
Don't leave, don't leave me behind.
Food and rent, you know, it's all
I know. We, it's, it's interesting where we get rent. For one thing, we have a partnership with Oars Farm Market, and we purchase food during their season from them weekly. And they give us whatever is, we, we have a, a budget, and they work with us really well. If they're getting to the end of a season for a particular item, they, they will give us the leftovers because if they keep them, they're not going to, they're not going to be usable. And they do the same thing at the end of the season. We get a lot of extra apples and other squash and other fall.
Yeah, don't forget cabbages.
Cabbage, right. Well, and the, so speaking of cabbage, we have one client or one supporter who plants a garden every year just for CCAP, which I think is fabulous. And we also have a lot of small contributions. People will come in and they've bought six cans of soup when they got their groceries. Those things add up. So donated food was 107, 637 pounds for the year. And that's a lot of donated food. And that's, that's from things like food drives and just individuals dropping food off.
Have you worked with Kitchen Orchard, Eddie?
We have not.
Carla Kitchen is a very giving person. She currently, my wife is with Meals on Wheels, and she deals with Carla Kitchen and Oars.
Yes.
And I would recommend you contact Carla Kitchen.
Okay. Kitchen?
Kitchen Orchard's up there at the Kitchen Orchard Road. Yeah, Kitchen Orchard Road, there, the Gray Road and Kitchen Orchard Road.
All right. Thanks for that suggestion. We also get food, free food from the Mountaineer Food Bank. And last year, going from '22 to '23, we had quite a, quite a drop in what they were providing for us. We went from getting 5,000 to 7,000 pounds of food a month to getting less than a thousand food, pounds for about six months. Now, it's come back a little bit. We don't know, they couldn't tell us what the reason was, but it was a little scary. And we also, so we mobilized some of our community partners and the churches in particular, and we receive a lot of food from churches. So we, as I think I said, we dispensed 157,529 pounds of food. So one thing I, if we're going to talk food for a minute, one thing I would like to ask you to do is have a food drive with the county employees bringing in food. We can help you with that. We can give you some suggestions. There's, there's no cost involved. And you have a big employee pool, and it would really help us if we could work out. I can have someone contact you about this. So if you, it's, it's really just fun. And you can als, you will also get, if you have maybe a month-long food drive, you'll find that some of your customers will see it and bring something in. It won't just be employees. So So what other questions do you have?
I had a couple of, my first comment was, I appreciate greatly the fact that your volunteers provide 100% of your eats there for labor and all, and that's just, today's world, that's amazing. And your percent of overheads, less than 12%.
Yes.
That's terrific. I don't, I, I, I would think each agency that would like to have those kind of percentages. Then your food drive thing, is there a certain time of year that works best?
Well.
Or does it matter?
It doesn't really matter, but there are, summer is a time when things dwindle. Now, we do get more fresh food in the summer from home gardens and other sources that I mentioned. But in, in the spring, maybe March or June, and then again, we get a lot of food starting around September and October and going through the, the holiday season. And we also provide, we provide 12 visits for food in a year. So it's once a month, they can come. Has to be 30 days in between because of the food bank regulations. But we also provide, not counted in the 12 visits, we provide money for, or food for Thanksgiving dinner and a Christmas dinner. And those were things that we started as special bonuses to our community. But really, right now, coming out of winter, or early summer, whatever, if you guys would consider that seriously, I would really be happy, and we could have someone work with you, take care of the whole thing for you.
Maybe, maybe we could call Annie Blake and do a city versus county. So we drive that real competition going on.
I'm, haven't I mentioned that the past two years, I wasn't going to say it again this year. I thought, well, if I can just get the county to do it, maybe the city will come in. But I think that would be, we have one that's called Battle of the Banks, and this could be, what, what would you call this? Battle of the?
I'd rather see us do a cooperative effort.
Or education being another one.
Title at the board?
Yeah.
They have 3,000 employees, so we're bored getting competition.
Well, anyway, that would be great.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Is all your food distributed at Otterbine, or do you have any satellite places around the county that distribute as well?
We, we do not have any. We do collaborate with WVU East outpatient clinics, where they do healthcare, education, and how, some, some of it is how to select food that's nutritional, and some of it, some of the classes are cooking that food. Some people don't know how to cook squash. It's amazing. They've never really had fresh.
My wife runs into that at Meals on Wheels.
Yes.
They have a farm-to-table program now.
Yes.
Golly, my wife has to tell them how to cook green beans, for crying out.
Well, sometime, it's fresh food in general, but they, they're used to opening a can. But to go back to what you asked, well, did, did that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah.
Just, I didn't know, you know, there's people missing out because they live, you know, outside of county areas, away from their Martinsburg, could be helped otherwise, you know. And I think some of the churches do their own little food stuff that's.
They do.
Goes through.
Yes, quite a few of the churches have a small food pantry that would get them through, get a person or family through for a couple of days.
Tell me that you do not accept home canned stuff or home-prepared foods?
We do not.
Okay. Because you can't.
We do not.
Mr. Hilton.
It surfaces occasionally.
He just put on another hat up here.
So I would, I would let you know, we've, we've sent our request in, I'm sure you've read it, and if you have enough funding to fulfill that, that equals the amount that we did get from the county, including what was not on our grant. But if you could repeat this year, give us our grant, and then keep us in mind later when you're looking at tweaking the budget, or maybe you'll just decide that you can give us a little more than that for the starter, because we're the only ones doing it, and it's, it's pretty vital to the people in the county.
Well, we certainly appreciate your efforts and your work effort, so much you do, Mrs., we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Catlett. Somebody mentioned that I wasn't president anymore. Somebody always rubs it in, you know? It's like, was you, wasn't it?
He's bitter.
Actually, it's kind of nice to think that I'm not going to be president. This was my second round of being president. My first round was when we had the COVID pandemic, which took, took us all by surprise, I'm sure you would agree. But we had our annual meeting, in fact, these handouts are from our annual meeting, and we installed Doug Montgomery as our new president. And I would, I, I think most of you probably know Doug, or you've heard of him, but if you haven't, he's going to speak for a few minutes with your indulgence about what he sees and what our board sees as some of our future work.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All yours, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you. I have, I don't know everybody, but I know I've worked with Mr. Gokenauer over the years, and flung a lot of hay bales around with Mr. Catlett at the park there for the Soapbox Derby. Thank you for having us. Basically, I, I see my job for the next year is just to continue to expand on the services that we have. Beverly and the entire group has done such a fantastic job, and we went through such a growth spurt. When we moved from St. Joe's to Otterbine, we actually, I went to New Jersey and picked up 16 pallets, plastic pallets, and a pallet jack. We had never had the capacity to handle that kind of volume before. And we were using a lot of existing old wooden shelving that was built into St. Joe's. So we got, I think it was 18 commercial six-foot, 3,000-pound shelving units and built them in. Built one wall in the basement, made ourselves a waiting room. Over at St. Joe's, we went through a period because of COVID where everybody would wait out in the parking lot. So we now have, they come in, we have an intake, we have a welcoming person who signs them in, they sit in the waiting room, and then they get called up into the intake office. The, I, I think the, the main thing, Beverly has finished up her term, and you saw in the, in the newspaper article. You do an entire two years, I think this term was two years, actually? Yeah. You do two years for CCAP, and we've got a tight budget, you get a bowl of flowers, that's it. But we indeed are one of the few agencies around, I think our 89.1% of our money went to services this past year, and that actually is probably not as high as it normally is. We were low as, I think, 6% to 7% the previous year. Literally, the cost of that was the pallets, the shelving units, the cost of the moving truck, and everything in getting set up at the new location. That drove our overhead up for one year. So we look at probably being back, back down around 6% or 7% next year.
Still pretty remarkable.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we are at this point 100% volunteer, and that's, that's about 90 people who volunteer, including our manager. She is there 10 to 1. She goes to Martin's and gets the, the eggs and the, and the milk beforehand. So she, her day starts at nine and finishes up about 2:00, Monday through Friday, and that's all volunteer. And everybody else who's there for those kind of hours, they're there two days a week, one day a week, whatever.
Martin's donate the eggs, purchase?
There is what is called an A-hold. It's, the, the term for the account is the A-hold account. When you go to Martin's or some of the other grocery stores, when you're checking out, it says, do you want to round up? And you pick yes or no. That, that rounding up goes into what is called the A-hold account. And then that's available for us. We go in, and we get the milk and eggs, and they, they literally charge it back to that A-hold account.
Is that just you guys on that account? How many, how many?
We just bought $6,000.
But is that only CCAP that does that, or it doesn't go to other organizations?
No, it does, and we don't really know exactly who it goes to. It doesn't tell you. A-hold is a terrible arm of.
It's giant.
Yeah. I was just curious if they give to multiple organizations, or just you guys, or? I know Meals on Wheels doesn't do that.
Doesn't get anything from there. That's, I, you know, I always see the roundup, but I never know who it goes to, you know, but at least now.
I think there may be a few others, but, well, all we see is the amount that is allotted to us. So we know when we go in for a month or two, we'll see that, that amount dwindle down, and then evidently, every two or three months, they, they, they add it in, and it'll go back up. But if we need, if we run out of peanut butter, or whatever, we can, we can run in and put it on that account also, so we can fill in with things.
And as I said, we just don't expect $6,000 change from them, from this program.
And that's worth of product, not cash, right?
Absolutely.
Right.
And we don't have a department to our.
That's good.
Very good.
So I look forward to working with you guys. Next year, I'll be the one to come up here and give you the report. In a nutshell, obviously, we always are looking for more money. On the rental assistance portion of it, we know how much we have allotted, and we have allotted that much, we know what our total budget is for the year. So we've divided that by 12, and the tenants and everybody in the county knows it, and they are in there heavy on the first, and by the fourth, the fifth at the latest, we're out of rental assistance. We've, we've blown the entire, the amount. So there's many people who still, the rest of the month, come in looking for it, and we have to tell them, you'll have to come back the first of next month, and don't make it the second or the third, make it the first, because it goes fast. So the need is incredible.
Which I know you're very familiar with, you know, the, as values continue to increase, so do rental costs continue to increase. And, you know, I know there's a lot of folks who work every day and still struggle to meet that, that payment.
Sure. And as those rents go up, people who have been in some of those houses, especially in the downtown area, some of the older areas, when they started, when you and I were in the business, I had apartments for $500. Doesn't exist anymore. And some of them retirees, veterans, and all of that, who have been in those units and figured that's, that's, that's the last house they were ever going to rent, are being forced out into other situations, because the, what was a $500 is now a $900 or an $1,100. A whole, half a house, we used to have $600. That's, that's 1,200 now. So, so it's, it's definitely tight. So, thank you for anything you can do for us, and we'll probably see you again, if not before, we'll see you next year.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care.
You'll be hearing from us about food.
Sounds good. All right. We're going to take a break here for a little bit, and then we'll come back, and we'll have Bill Kearns with the Health Department. Okay. We're back in session and we have Mr. Bill Kearns or Kearns from the Health Department to tell us about his budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good to see you, Bill.
Good to see you all.
You surviving this wonderful weather we're having, staying safe?
As much as possible. I'm not sure who the county actually has now for contracting for cleaning parking lot and stuff, but they did a great job. So we was able to get to work and staff be safe and.
That was Pitcher Chapel time.
They did, they did a good job of taking care of that. So thank you all. Um, this gives an opportunity for me to come and I think it's been a year. And one of the things that we, we kind of miss, and I only get to do this once a year, is we get, we've had, previously, we used to come like once a quarter to give you an update, to let you know the great things that the, that the Health Department's doing, that Mr. Barnhart sometimes might miss from his monthly report to you from the board. But it gives us an opportunity to, to report to you what's going on to help at your Health Department. But this time of year, we come and, and give a budget presentation, let you know the position that we're in at the Health Department. And what we're looking for is for the upcoming year. And so I appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you all. We are presenting, as we have in the last few years, a level request, $100,000 from the, from the County Commission. And I think that's a, that's a modest amount of request. We don't ask for more than we need. We try to strive to give back and we've proven that time and time again. So when we look at wanting to request that $100,000, that equates to about 83 cents per capita. Now, I'm just looking at just that funds. We also receive from our counterpart, but joins with the Board of Health is Morgan County, which request will be at $40,000 for the upcoming year. And that comes out to about $2.35 per person, or per capita. Berkeley County, larger county. Certainly, the county, county commissions on both counties provide in-kind funding at many different levels. We have saved a large amount of money. And I was just talking with Mr. Wyon about this a while ago. I was talking with, at a state meeting I had yesterday. The county has saved us a large amount of money in our budget just by providing IT support. We, we've saved thousands of dollars in 2023 alone, just because of the county taking us on and providing that IT support. Only charging what we need, not paying a retainer fee per se to the state, but providing what we need in service almost real time. So we appreciate that, what you do provide. The $100,000 is great seed money that you provide to this large county. Surely, we have proven ourself over the last few years, if anything, through the pandemic, of what your local Health Department can do. All of our staff worked as epidemiologists, basically, and contact tracers and vaccinators and, and parking lot attendants. And, but we couldn't do it without the community and we couldn't do it certainly without the commission's help in providing service to us and the meetings that we had to have. But we operate at the Health Department, a proposed budget of this year is about a little over $3 million. One of the highest budgets that's outside of COVID that we've ever, ever looked at. And it's because a lot of things have happened over the past couple of years. We've tried to increase our staff salaries. We've, we've written grants to be able to provide some, an infrastructure grant, which provides basically by grant locality pay to increase our staff salaries based on their years of service and their salary, taking into consideration, but that is provided by a grant. So when those grants go away, we have to try to find something to try to satisfy and keep consistently providing for quality employees that we have. 23.5 FTEs is what we have at the Health Department that function between Berkeley and Morgan County. We pull from one county to help with the other during times of needs. Right now, we pull twice a week from one of our nurses from Morgan County to work in Berkeley County because it's hard to provide nurses with the salaries that we can provide. We also have one of our sanitarians or two that works up in Morgan County during peak times, especially during apple butter and times of that nature when, or if someone's out for, during Christmas time or to take leave, we pull so that the, the services are not stopped.
Bill, that's been going on since.
Forever.
Well, since '72, when I went there. I many a times did the apple butter festival.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, apple butter festival and, yeah, enjoyed it.
I think it went back to times you and Noah went out and, and inspected when it wasn't building the ark.
It was a little wet then, but.
Jim helped find a go-for wood.
Yeah.
But between the, between the two counties, we have six line sanitarians and one, one environmental health chief. We have three nurses that function between two counties and one nurse director. That is a small amount of staff per capita.
That's more, more than one when I was there.
Yes.
One in two counties.
Yes. Many more duties now.
No, the duties were the same. It was just, we didn't, didn't take care of them.
Right. We, we have highly trained staff, but even within our environmental health department, we have, we, we get our staff trained and then they'll either relocate or the state will take them and steal them away and offer them.
Always have had that problem.
Wonderful parts, yes. So we have staff that are continuously going through trainings, new staff. And I say highly trained, they're trained at the best that they can receive that we have, that the state has to offer, trying to keep that politically correct there. But nothing takes place of real-life experiences. I think all of you all would agree that on-the-job training and seeing different soils and seeing different restaurants and seeing different, dealing with different complaints, nothing will replace real-life experiences. So we try to gain from that. But we understand that with staff doing their jobs, sometimes complaints will arise. There are very few that actually do arise, and we've addressed a lot of them and tried to provide some more comprehensive, comprehensive training. We also have a regional sanitarian now that we can draw upon that we haven't had for years.
Who came from Berkeley County?
Did, yes, and.
Did the previous.
Previously in the military and lots of great training. But when we look at our environmental numbers, in 2023 alone, we had 212 septics that we inspected, multiple visits sometimes. We had 155 wells. We had 80 evaluations. Not to mention, we have over 600 food service establishments that we are out inspecting. That's a lot of work for a few staff members. We have, within our nursing department, we, of course, are, are busy dorny influenza season, of course, but we did vaccination for just influenza. October, 865 vaccinations. 865. We did 39 site visits to different locations to be able to do vaccinations, such as when we come here to the, to the council and do the vaccinations here. 39 places we went throughout, in just that month alone.
Do you have COVID vaccine there?
We do. We, we do have COVID vaccine.
I gotta get that.
It is, uh, yeah, it's, it's for people that, basically, the state has not provided any COVID vaccines to the Health Department for those that don't have insurance or, or it's basically for people that do have insurance, and we bill all insurances, but we do have COVID vaccine.
I have insurance, as you well know.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And also need T-dap, so.
We can take care of you. But, so I, I give you those numbers just to say, this, you're getting a really good return on your investment of what the Health Department's providing. The, but we suffer also as being, we're, we're not a county agency. We are an agency of the county that you all provide funding to us, but we're not.
Called it local.
Within the city of Martinsburg, but we're not a city agency. We're not a state agency, but we have state civil service employees there, there. But our legislators, and they have a tough job in Charleston, but a lot of times they're, they're either working against public health or the ones that are not are few and far between. So we're suffering from right now, within this, this year alone, hundreds of bills have been introduced that may either help or not, most not, not help public health. One of those being they're looking at, when we request to the state for additional funds for like permit fees, it may just raise a modest amount, but over the statewide, it, it helps. But when we're asking for, we've asked previously, you know, they regulated the maximum amount you can charge for a permit fee. So you have a huge restaurant that we, that was going to take two sanitarians to go out and inspect a couple hours there, two, three, four times a year, and all they're paying is $400, when you go right over the state line and it's three times that much. So we don't ask for those large dollar amounts, but we just want to satisfy the expense that it costs to go out. So our legislators are looking at possibly this year of just removing it from the state code and putting it back onto the laps of the county boards of health, which you all know, if the Board of Health would increase those rates, it has to come to the commission here for, to be ratified, and it has to go to two commissions since we're a joint county board of health. We don't want to make money at the Health Department. We just want to satisfy expenses and, but we need to, we need to retain our qualified staff. So we also are looking at, we do a very robust harm reduction program, seeing people every week. We do a satellite clinic where we go out to a much-needed place in Berkeley County. We're looking at the same thing for Morgan County to do a satellite clinic. But we have legislators in Charleston that are trying to take away and destroy the harm reduction programs. And there's already been a Senate bill introduced this year to, to remove all syringe access programs. That is the one big part that we are proud of, that what we, what we put out there as far as clean needles, which will does a multitude of things. It decreases disease, and that's one of the things that attracts people into our programs. We have, we have a senator that wants to remove those, and if that happens, our harm reduction program will essentially go away. What we put out there, we receive, and I looked at the nursing report that Tanya provided, we rate anywhere between, and this is looking, just looking at July through December, anywhere from a lowest amount of, of return rate of being 97% to 100% return rate on those syringes. That means they're not hitting the ground. They're bringing them back in. If they don't, they're not getting more. Those are great numbers to look at, but we constantly have people wanting to kind of take away from public health, and we're trying to enhance public health. So we continue to write grants so we don't have to come to the commission and to the city and the Board of Education and ask for additional money if we can get it by grants. But grants aren't ever guaranteed, and they do go away. So you saw in the presentation that I provided earlier of what we do and the amount of grants that we get from state aid, which is based per capita. We've received $1.15 million. And then for insurance billing is another big one, providing things, Mr. Barnhart had mentioned, $142,000 for that. And then we get other local funding, grants have been provided for, they're written and approved, one point, a little over $1 million. So we do a lot of work to be able to get that $3 million budget, but every penny is accounted for. We have clean audits. We are meticulous about what we do. But when you do a job really well, you have some people that just want to complain. And, and as much as we want to be able to help and we need to be able to help, sometimes we get complaints. We've received last year alone, 160 complaints. Now, this is a lot, most of these 160 complaints are about food service places. If you go somewhere and all of a sudden you get a, you, you feel that you had food poisoning, so you're going to go onto the Health Department's website and file a complaint. We have to address every one of those, either send a sanitarian out to investigate or we have to make phone calls or whatever.
I saw in Kara's presentation, they actually closed King's on Rock Cliff Drive.
I believe so, yes.
Do you have any idea why?
Yes, and they were reopened.
Well, I assume they were reopened, yeah.
Inspection reports on the website.
I love that place.
Every inspection that we do goes on our Health Department's website, and that's one of the most popular places. The hits on their website is the restaurant inspections. So I was able actually to go out on the reinspection with them and, and, and see the, the staff in action, which I really enjoy. But that's not a, that's not something we want to do, and, and you can see in our monthly reports that Kara provides, the number of closures are not large.
No, they're not.
But we, that's the last thing we want to do, because if we close an establishment, that means we have to follow up with another inspection to be able to reopen them. And, but with the way the code is written, and we have to abide by that food code, whichever one that the legislators adopt, we have to go by. I believe 2013 maybe. But whichever one the state has adopted, that's the one we have to go by. And it says what and what does not justify a closure. So our, again, the, the sanitarians receive an eight-week training throughout a year period. They'll go for a week, come back, a couple weeks, they'll go another week. So they do receive a pretty structured training, but it's not until they actually get back into the office to be able to apply what they've learned. And that's, that's one of the most important parts, is that on-the-job training. The, so we've had lots of accomplishments throughout the year, but we have lots of things we're looking forward to. We're going to be looking towards finding a replacement for my position as I get to that retirement, retirement time, and looking forward to that. But one of the bigger things we're even looking forward to is, and it's kind of stagnated a little bit, but we're going to try to get it back in gear, is the building expansion for the Health Department. We have funds that was provided that are going to expire if we don't use them. So we need to, we need to put that into, into high gear. And I, I know the commission has a tight budget on funds. So when I say that our funds go back, we, we've contributed funds when we, when the commission purchased Waverly Court as a whole, when we moved from Emmett Roush Drive, we were able to provide, because of savings, a half million dollars. When we looked at this building expansion, because of savings, the Board of Health was able to present three-quarters of a million dollars. So, and many, many of these dollars were made available because of lack of staffing that we had. So we don't want to sit on funds if we can use it to structure our facility for the future. And that's what we're looking forward to, the future. So looking forward to, I'm seeing a budget that Mr. Wyon's, is going to be presented to him and then he'll pass on to me, so I can present to the Board of Health. But we need to be moving. We don't want to lose any of the funds that we have made available to be able to, to do the building expansion. We've looked, I worked with the architect, we've looked at downsizing for where we was initially, which would be a cost savings, but yet provides still every deliverable that we were looking for. Takes a little bit more square footage on the first floor, because we wouldn't have a second floor, but it's going to meet every deliverable that we're looking for, including providing for HIPAA confidentiality, because the clinical side will be in the building, or I'm sorry, the clinical side now would be in the existing building, whereas the environmental will be in the other building. So that's one of the things, and I can't say it enough, it's going to provide for protection of confidentiality with the building expansion, but we need to do that. We need to do that yesterday. So I'm looking forward to moving forward in the next year for that. And, and again, I, I love coming and presenting to you about the great things, almost 30 years, I have invested into the Health Department. With the exception of Jim, I'm the only public health director you all have ever worked with. And Jim knows previously who was there. I'm the only one you've worked with, so it's, it gives me great honor to be able to come and present to you all annually and let you know, because I'm proud of my Health Department. I'm proud of the staff that we have there and the time of their lives that they invest, not just daytime, but evenings, weekends. We get calls a lot on the weekends. I get calls from veterinarian clinics, I just got one this past weekend, from a person that was bitten. They know that they can get a hold of the Health Department 24/7, and I'm proud of that. So that's my presentation that I have for you today, and certainly open for any questions that you'd have.
Any new staff programs coming up? Any new, you know, new areas that the staff getting into?
We are looking forward to, we're exploring some with, it's on the clinical side of diabetes prevention sessions again, but we're also on environmental side, looking at reinstating the annual trainings, not only for food service, but also for, for septic installers. Because there's a lot, a lot of things that have happened and a lot of legislature has changed things, and it's time, we, we need to make sure people are updated on those issues. Certainly, the pandemic has made that not a possibility during that time, but we need to get that back and we need just, we're basically for the septic installers and, and those were just looking for venues to be able to hold it in, to have hundreds of people, so. But those, we're looking forward to that, and Kara's looking at scheduling those, and obviously, this time of year is the better for that. But getting a venue pretty quickly and getting a training program is key.
For both counties, I would say.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill?
Yeah, Bill, is it true, are there just certain employees in the Health Department or all of them, that your, their salaries are regulated by the state health department?
Every employee at the Health Department is regulated by West Virginia.
If you had other funding, you couldn't give them more money in their salary. It's all regulated by the state.
That's correct. We, we do have some special hiring rates for, for some of our positions that we had to request through the Division of Personnel, but we can't arbitrarily just give a staff member an increase without submitting forms for justification to do that.
Those employees though, aren't state employees?
Every employee of the Health Department is a state civil service employee.
Okay, so what I'm saying to you is when the governor gives a raises to state employees, does that affect your people?
It does, in a sense. Senator Blair and Senator Barrett was very instrumental in working on our behalf for Berkeley County, but also statewide, but they're our representatives. So they, they worked on our behalf to, to put in documentation that says anytime the state gives an increase, that it also would refer back down to local health departments. And it's by way of increasing our state aid allotment. So, yes.
So they do cover that increase though, through their allotment?
Yes.
Okay. But it is totally controlled by the state?
It is, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill, on your harm reduction program, you need to exchange program. My memory certainly right, about a year ago, maybe a little bit more, the city of Charleston did away with their exchange program, and they saw a very high increase in HIV.
Yes, sir.
That not correct?
That is correct.
It was epidemic proportions. I mean, it was big.
Now, we, we don't see large numbers in Morgan County. A lot of it has the location of the Health Department, which might, well, we're going to look at a satellite clinic for up there. But in, I don't know if you realize this, I mean, we have, you realize the problem that we have within Berkeley County, but our, there's not a harm reduction clinic in Jefferson County. I just met with Dr. Edie yesterday, and I, I was kind of shocked about that. But there's not one there. Number one, you have to have a funding source to be able to purchase the syringes, the clean syringes, and because you can't cover those under grants, many other things you can as well. But, so we operate, so we see some people, and it's not just, it's not just, you know, it's not just Berkeley County residents that come see us. We, we may have some that come from Jefferson County, but they're within West Virginia. But that, that program is very, we, we receive about $150,000 a year for a harm reduction program to purchase some for salaries, but also to provide things like Band-Aids and, and clean water and, and things of that nature. But we have also seen people that come through the, because of the harm reduction program that we have, has gotten into program and gotten clean, reestablished their lives. Those are the, those are the things we love seeing because of what we do. And I went to a great presentation that Tim Saya and his group helped put on this past year, and I got to hear people give their testimonies about what the programs have done for them and their lives and jobs that they've created or been able to reestablish. It's very heartwarming to see that is the product of what you are doing. That is public health in action. But it doesn't, you can't do it alone. We work with a number of different agencies. We are blessed to have the day report center that we work with and to provide our quick response team through there, but it's funding through a grant that I get to write, that I get, that I send a check to reimburse for all those expenses every month for the day report. to reimburse for all those expenses every month for the day report center in regards to the quick response teams. But what happens when those grants go away? What are we left with? So we're looking for the future and so yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, thank you all.
And I'm sure we'll be getting some drawings together here pretty soon again and hopefully break ground before the end of the end of the term that we.
I'll hold you to that. Thanks.
Congratulations on being the grandpa.
Yes, indeed. It's great to be one.
We appreciate your staff joining our, we shot one again this year for us.
Oh, they enjoyed it. They enjoyed it. There's a lot of good schedules, but they enjoyed it.
Did they enjoy giving the needle or sticking the needle?
Well, depends on who you're giving it to.
That's why I didn't show up with any sanitarians.
All righty, well, there's a good laugh for you. Next up at 11, we'll run a little bit behind here, is Community Alternatives to Violence and Joe Elliott, Executive Director, come on up. Good morning.
Thanks for entertaining our budget request again this year. We're not a super well-known organization, so should I give a quick preview or review of who we are and what we do?
Sure.
That'd be nice, okay. So we are the only licensed battering intervention prevention program here in the Eastern Pain Handle. What that means is we're working with individuals who are using violence in the relationships, primarily partner relationships, but also parent-child relationships, sometimes it's brother, brother or whatever. We run classes in the three counties, most everyone is here in Berkeley County. Take through a 32-week session program where we are working to help you to, number one, take responsibility for what you did, understand the harms that you caused, figure out why you have done this, right? It's not enough to say I was angry. We don't accept that. Anger is not a cause of domestic violence. And then work on becoming an accountable person, meaning what are you going to do to intentionally move towards a life of nonviolence? Most everyone does come to us through the courts, the criminal courts, family courts. We have a lot of DHHR folks, we have on probation terms of parole, and we do have people who are there on their own. We've got quite a few right now who, you know, my friend went through your program and said maybe I should come too, and now they're in our program. So that's the gist of what we do, okay? And yeah, if you have more questions, I get pretty animated, so we'll try and keep it going. We had a really, I hate to say it's a good year because a good year means we're growing. Growing means there's just so much domestic violence in our community. But we increased the number of people that came through our program in 2022 by 45 people, which is a lot considering the total amount that came through was 433. 308 of those, or 71%, were from Berkeley County. Right now in our classes, I don't have the breakdown of counties, but right now we have over 200 people in classes right now as we speak.
Are you a tri-county?
Yeah, we do Morgan, Berkeley and Jefferson. That's what our license covers, yes. So for a couple of years now, I have come to you telling you how badly we needed to hire a third person, we have finally done it. We did it. We've got our part-time person. They started January 4th, actually, so that increases our expenses. We were able to hire someone who was facilitating four classes. So instead of paying them as a facilitator, we're now paying them as an employee. So that's saving us a little on the facilitation side, but has increased our payroll costs. It's having your support means the world because that's showing our community that we are all together saying domestic violence in our community is not acceptable, that we all know that our community isn't safe if people aren't safe in their homes.
How are you funded?
On a wing and a prayer.
Well, do you get state support?
So primary funding comes from participant fees. You do have to pay a fee to be in the program. We are a sliding fee scale and we do understand that so many of our folks, too many of our folks are underemployed or unemployed and they have no ability to pay anything. So we allow them to do community service in lieu of paying fees, which is fantastic because it's still, that's that's part of, you know, taking responsibility for what you've done is you've got to pay a fee to be in our program. So primarily it is participant fees. Participant fees don't cover all of our expenses. So we are Partners of United Way, they are fantastic, you guys have been fantastic. Ecolab helps us out a little bit, we do the unity campaign fundraisers.
You don't get any support at all from the state, the state of West Virginia?
No.
Gee.
We do not.
I apologize.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of grant money out there for those who are providing direct victim services. And while victims are the ultimate beneficiary of what we do, we are not directly working with them. We're working with those who have used violence, right? They're like the service person that we're working to benefit the victim to prevent, hopefully, future victims from coming from that individual. We are, just let you guys know, we are part of the Domestic Violence Reduction Task Force that was created by Bill Ellenfeld, the U.S. Attorney for the Northern District of West Virginia. We are part of that and in response to the unfortunate murder a few weeks ago, we are going to be holding a community conversation. We are partnering, all of us in the task force, so Epic will be there, we will be there, I believe someone from the prosecutor, the various police departments will be there February 29th at the Martinsburg Library from 6:00 to 8:00. We will all be there discussing what we're doing. We can't discuss that case specifically for obvious privacy reasons, but we will go there. You know, if you want to come and hear more about what all of us in the community are doing together to sort of work to end domestic violence in our community.
Were there two?
I believe so, yes. We've had a lot of Epic and my organization, a lot of calls from people, what are you doing? What are you doing? So we figured we needed to speak to the community of what we're doing, how the various pieces and parts are fitting together. Our message can be a hard one, right? Because everyone wants to protect the victims and the children, which we do too. And then, you know, Cav comes along and say, hey, we're working with the abusers. And at first that can be like, why are you doing that, right? It's imperative that we're intervening. It's imperative that we're intervening. If we just send folks to jail, what we know is they get angrier, they take more of a victim stance, right? Now they're not just mad at whatever situation, now they're blaming the courts, they're blaming the person that called the cops. They're not getting service, right? So it's imperative that programs like ours are coming in to work with these individuals to try and get them to see there are other ways, right? Because we believe this type of violence is a choice. You are choosing to be violent. When someone comes to us and says, I got angry, she triggered me, he pushed my buttons, whatever, we don't accept it, right? And by the time we're done with you in 32 weeks, if you do the work, you will come out believing that too, that you made the choice to hurt someone, that we hurt the people we believe we have a right to hurt.
32 weeks?
I'm sorry?
32 weeks?
Truly, that's not long enough. They meet for an hour and a half once a week, so if you do that math, that's 48 hours, right? And we, you can, you can't come more often than once a week because we are dealing with lifelong beliefs. Overwhelming number of our folks grew up in homes with abuse. They don't know any different. When we ask, is violence in a home normal, they say yes, because this is what they grew up with. Many of our folks are dealing with adverse childhood experiences. We're not therapists, you know, we can't deal with that. We can get referred to sources. What we can do is help you get to a place where those traumas are not an obstacle to making healthy, respectful choices. But yeah, 32 weeks. There are some states that are shorter and we don't talk about those, but there are some states that are longer and those are the ones that we would like to emulate, yes.
I have a question.
You bet.
Do your clients come to you voluntarily or are they given to you by the courses? Assigned to you by the courses?
Both. Most of them are assigned, referred, you know, as part, as terms of probation or as a deferred adjudication, meaning, you know, if you complete the, like you plead guilty, but we hold that plea in abeyance. So if you successfully complete our program, it'll go away. But we do have some that come voluntarily.
And are you welcome to speak?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
My other question is if you didn't exist, where would they be sent?
If there was no battering.
Would they have another option?
Some say anger management programs work, but as we know, anger does not cause domestic violence. Anger management doesn't really cover what we do. We do a piece of anger management because anger is real, right? We get angry. But if there's not a battering intervention prevention program, you know, there, we've got a problem, indeed. You bet.
Okay.
Any other questions? They're short and sweet compared to my previous fellow.
Any other questions for Joe? All right, well, thanks for coming in. And like I said, Bill mentioned earlier, the budget's always pretty tight.
Understood.
So we'll do our best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Mr. Clint Holgwin, good to see you, my friend.
No one ever referred to me as short or sweet.
There's a reason for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear here. Like others, we have an interagency agreement between the council and the Solid Waste Authority, and I'm already not using the right words, right? Not council anymore. And I'm hoping this document made its way to you folks.
It did.
Good, good. This is our annual report.
I read it last.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do, if possible, just go through our annual report and then jump into the details of the budget. So let's start with the Berkeley County Recycling Program. That program began way back in 1995. It has since grown tremendously over the years and it is now.
And I use it regularly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Bet you're not the only one. We've now grown to the, we're the largest recycling program in the state of West Virginia, largest being defined by weight, the amount of weight. In fact, you can take several counties, six, seven, eight counties and lump them together and our tonnages are alone trump that collection of counties.
Does that include yard waste?
The weights that include all 22 items that we take. So for 2023, our participation, meaning the number of cars that came into our three sites, actually dropped. It dropped a little over 1% down to 129,000 vehicles, where we were in the neighborhood of 150,000. The reason for the drop was because we closed the Grapevine Road Recycling Center on Mondays. We did that because of budget cutbacks due to the Insorge situation. So the, you know, accessibility has a direct impact on the public's participation in our program. If you look through the charts, there's one specific to Grapevine Road and you'll see the drop. And then there's another chart specific to the South Berkeley Center, you'll see a slight increase. And then there's a chart specific to the hedge, the little teeny Hedgesville Center, and it literally doubled in participation. We think that's a reflection of the residential growth right across the street from the center that the folks there are using it. If you look at single stream participation, meaning those that recycle at the curb, you can see that the number of subscribers to Apple Valley has also increased in keeping in mind that that material come, that those recyclables that Apple Valley picks up comes to the Berkeley County Recycling Program. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute.
Could that be a reason for the decrease in the vehicles governed on the road?
It could, however, in the past it hasn't. As they've grown, so has the drop-off program grown, yeah. If you look at tonnages, and I'm at this chart here with the muscle arm, if you look at tonnages, you can see that despite the drop in participation, we had a record year. We had the highest year of participation or tonnages from a tonnage perspective that in the history of the program. Little over 12 million pounds. It was just, just under a 1% increase. And as you leaf through the various slides after that, you'll see that about nine of the 22 categories saw an increase. There was a very large drop in brush through it, through the year that we attribute to lack of rain, dry year. And so we've seen this before. If you actually look at the brush chart, you'll see that there are peaks, there are certain years that peak up and those years tend to be the wet, the weather years. Give you a little feel for some of the numbers, there's a, there's a slide there on paper tonnages, that's, that's mixed paper and cardboard combined, a little bit under a million pounds was marketed from the Berkeley County program. That represents 120 tractor trailers. That's just paper alone that didn't go to the landfill. So, you know, the impacts are real on waste stream, landfill reduction. There were, you mentioned yard waste. Jim, there were 80 containers of yard waste from our program that went to the composting facility over in Jefferson County. Another 80 containers of scrap metal and appliances that went to Conservant for recycling. Nine tractor trailers of glass went to Carryall Products up in, outside of Pittsburgh.
What do they do with that? Make it into asphalt or?
Carryall Products has a several million dollar facility that will process the glass to various things toward the place. It's really fascinating. Their primary market is to convert it back to sand and some of that glass comes to Berkeley County where it's used to make fiberglass insulation down at Tableau Station.
I know color is important in separating glass. Is that clear glass that that all happens to or?
Carryall Products accepts all colors, but they prefer it separated. If you send them mixed colors, it has no commodity value at all. However, if you separate it by colors, for example, glass will get paid $40 a ton for it and that helps offset the cost to drive to Pittsburgh.
Do you have a problem with the locals throwing mix in, in your bins?
Not really. If we were to, if I was to say there was a problem is this, what is often called wish recycling, people will look at a ceramic coffee jug and go, well, that maybe is clear glass, but it's not. And it's actually a contamination that, you know, is really for us to worry about. People get the colors, the different colors for the, for the most part, yeah.
I was wondering.
So you're speaking of the carafe, the coffee carafe? The clear glass like you use on your coffee makers?
No, I'm talking about like a coffee mug, a ceramic coffee mug. Ceramics are a big no-no in glass recycling. It can ruin an entire load, just a handful of the stuff. And we look really hard for that as we're loading it. Mirrors, plate glass, window glass, those kind of things are not acceptable. It's not a glass recycling program, it's a glass bottle and jar program, yeah. Good questions. So I'm just leafing through the charts here. If you have any, you know, questions on a specific item, please, please let me.
Plastic is like it has been?
Yeah, plastic is, plastic containers are only accepted at Grapevine Road. We have a cooperative with Apple Valley where it's marketed to their operation over in Williamsport. And that's a frustrating point for us. We would like to offer that services at the Inwood Center like we used to. We do offer plastic bags at both sites and that's driven, we're so fortunate, you know, Trex is in Winchester and that's where the market is. So Trex pays, pays us for the plastic. And what we do was, but they will only take plastic if it's bailed. So we ship the plastic to the Martinsburg Rescue Mission. The Rescue Mission bails it for us, they give us the bales back, we ship it to Trex. Trex pays us, we donate the same amount to the Martinsburg Rescue Mission.
Plastic is probably my most volumetric.
Sure.
Item. It's incredible.
Yeah. We all have 20, 25 containers of plastic compared to one glass.
Yeah, oh yeah. The glass is minor and plastic is major. Plastic and newspaper.
Yeah, volume versus weight. So plastic's a big volume, but low weight. So, plastic's a big volume, but low weight. And unfortunately, I mean, maybe depending on how you look at it, we, recycling programs are often judged on participation and weight. So we're unique in West Virginia that we collect a lot of organics, and organics have a lot of weight, and that helps our tonnage.
That's one thing you don't get from me is organics.
Yeah. Yeah, you have a little farm, yeah.
Yeah, I'm 124 acres. I have soared my organics.
So one thing I do want to point out is there is a chart titled Single Stream Curbside. And you see that it, for last year, it skyrocketed. So this, that's the weight that comes in from Apple Valley.
Now, that's all in one container, correct?
Right, it's co-mingled.
So how do you separate it?
We don't. We don't. It is, it goes into an old building at Grapevine Road, and it's just simply transloaded into a big truck, a roll-off container. So Apple Valley has, they offer a voluntary recycling program. People subscribe to it. And their trucks at the end of the route is not full. And they don't like the run to Williamsport with, with a truck that's not full. So we, we kind of built, I'm going to call it a transfer station, but it doesn't...
Well, it's been there several years.
It has. Looks like it started in 2008, to look at it. And it started with another company that Apple Valley bought their permit. So, yeah, so it's, they just bring in trucks that are a third full or whatever and unload in the building. And then once there's enough in the building to fill a big roll-off container, it's loaded and then shipped over there. And we did all of that work, Solid Waste Authority's program did all that work until this year. Apple Valley approached us that they felt they could help their, the economics of their recycling program if they could bring recyclables from the businesses that they serve, and if they could bring the recyclables from Jefferson County that they serve to that building. Because literally, if something, if a truck finished a route in Harpers Ferry and it was a third full, they drove clear over to Williamsport with a truck that was a third, third full. They didn't have a consolidation activity like we had here in Berkeley County. So we told them, you know, we, Solid Waste Authority met and discussed with them and said, you know, we just, our staff can't keep up with the volume that would come from all of that business recyclable and stuff. So we made an arrangement where they took it over, and they do the loading, they do all the driving, and they continue to pay us to use that building. They pay us a, a basic rent to use the building, and then they pay us a certain amount based on the number of subscribers. So, so yeah, the reason that we're setting a record, it's, you know, at 12 million pounds is despite brush going way down, was this change in the program where Berkeley County is now managing business recycling and recycling from Jefferson County. Any other questions on recycling? If not, I'll go on to litter control, but...
One, so when it gets to, you say you take it to Williamsport?
Yeah, Apple Valley.
Where it gets separated in?
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't finish the question there. The Apple Valley has a...
At that point, that's where it gets separated.
Yeah, it has a $4 million processing facility. So the mixed recycling is unloaded, and it's run, it runs through machinery and a little bit of hand sorting.
You pay Apple Valley then, and then Apple Valley?
The MRF in Hagerstown or in Williamsport is owned by Apple Valley. They, they own it and operate it, so...
Where is it?
Right on Interstate 70 at, near the Valley Mall exit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an industrial park. You probably wouldn't know it's there unless...
Yeah, no idea.
It says Apple Valley on the front of it, but we tried really hard years ago to get them to locate that here, but we lost because Washington County has two interstates, and we had, and we have one. But, yeah, so if you were to go there, basically, you see mixed recycling going in, and then you see bales going out, and each bale would be a cans, steel cans, aluminum cans, cardboard, mixed paper, plastic, and so on. You know, there are seven kinds of plastics, so there's seven kind of plastic bales.
Geez, that's pretty sophisticated.
And they're getting ready to spend, we, our board toured the facility again a couple weeks ago, and they're getting ready to spend three or four more million dollars on the place to bring in more, more technology.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good for them.
On to litter control. Of course, we have a great cooperative with a whole lot of moving parts with the council and the marshals and the courts and the community service program, where there's a roadside litter program that you folks are intimately familiar with. All of that material comes to the Solid Waste Authority, comes to Grapevine Road or the South Berkeley Center. Anything that can be easily recycled, like a TV, we take it. Anything that cannot be landfilled, like a tire, we take it. And everything else is put into an Apple Valley container and goes to the landfill, and Apple Valley funds that cost.
So you don't separate cans?
No, we don't. We don't. The cans would have dirt or, you know, just contamination, and, and we don't have the staff to support that kind of thing anyway. But if you look through the charts, you can see that we, we do a lot for litter. We had a tire collection event last year, two of them actually, one in the spring and one in the fall. Combined 8,800 tires were collected in those two events.
And where do they go?
Yeah, the state DEP handles that contract statewide. There is a tire mono fill, it's a landfill for one thing, tires, over in Lewis County. So the tires are chipped into pieces like this, and then they're put into a cell of the landfill. It's a battle that we lost way back in the 1990s when the legislature passed the Tire Management Act. We felt some tires were easily recycled and that the program should be set up differently. And many states do recycle a lot of their tires. West Virginia's not one of them. And their, West Virginia's theory at the time was put them in a, a landfill for just that, and someday you can mine it back out. It was going to take technology that doesn't exist to do that. Yeah.
Don't they use a lot of recycled tires for like playgrounds and things?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Once you pull the metal out and nylon out, the crumb rubber that's left is often used, can be used in asphalt applications, playground applications, and so on and so forth.
They won't do that here?
I've, I've beat my head against that wall enough right now.
It's a process. I mean, it's, it's been tried.
It has been, and it, it does work, but it's, it's got economics of scale.
It's tough.
And it, and then let's not, and it is more expensive than what, let's say, West Virginia's doing, shipping them up and putting them in a landfill, for sure. Folks may remember the Inwood Tire Pile. The idea behind that tire pile was to recycle tires. Now, that, that didn't happen there, but...
And there was also a facility on Race Street.
Yep, yep.
That tried to do the exact same things. They're, they're very troublesome to the fire service. And I know environmentally, it's probably a good thing, but that was a terrible location for it, right in the heart of the city, for one thing. The experience that we had in Inwood was another environmental catastrophe.
Well, there's even another environmental problem. They hold water.
Yes, it is.
And mosquitoes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Many a times.
Bad snakes, mosquitoes, the whole...
Yeah, but mosquitoes were the big one.
We took over the Corales Farm years ago. There was a huge tire pile there that the Deputy Sheriff's Association had a shooting range area. It's unbelievable messing, getting rid of. I mean, unbelievable.
Now, you mentioned snakes. You made me this, in our stream cleanup program, I went to grab a tire back this past summer, and as I went there to grab the tire, a snake went in it. So I'm like, whoo, that one can stay this trip. I'll get it another day. But, yeah.
Do you see many snakes doing that?
No, not really. That's kind of unusual. I mean, we may see four, five, six snakes a year in the creeks.
I was, yeah, always intrigued when, when you, when you post that stuff. I mean, that, that would be neat, but no, I can't.
Yeah.
Are you going to cover the, the stream program?
Never heard. Is it good for the...
I want to point out this...
It's compost.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not a person that scares too much by snakes. I mean, I just know to leave my line.
I'm okay as long as I see them first.
Yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely. When you look down and they're between your feet, yeah.
They're easier than spiders. Spiders, they're sneaky.
Yeah. The bulky good collection chart there is one I'd like to bring your attention to. This is something we just started last year as part of the 250th celebration, part of the 250th cleanups that, that were run. So we, we had a free day, I'm going to call it, at the recycling centers. But we took more than just our normal recycling. We also took mattresses and sofas and couches and things like that. And the board really liked that. We got a lot of good feedback from the public that that was needed. Those, many of those items are not accepted at the landfill for free on their free day. So we repeated that event, and turnout was about twice of what we saw the previous year. So one of the things we'd like to do moving forward is to continue to do that twice a year, that, again, calling it Free Day, but it includes our recyclables, our normal recyclables, which we, some of those items are not free, like electronics. We, we make them free for that day, for those days, but we also take, like I said, a lot of other items that we normally would not take.
Do you have a special day for pesticides and paint and that kind of stuff?
Not for paint, but yes, for pesticides. We work with the Department of Agriculture, and we have one day. The turnout this year was atrociously poor. We had like nine customers. We normally have 50. And I'm a little worried the Department of Agriculture is not going to see it as an opportunity to repeat it, because it was a lot of setup for them.
How much advertising do you do for them?
Well, that's one of the problems, is with ours, cut, with our budget as it is, we don't do a lot of paid advertising.
Well, I was wondering if they, you could work with us, and we could broadcast that kind of stuff.
Well, that does happen on the Facebook sites. We, we do advertise because it's free on Facebook, and I go on the radio once a month and, and talk about it there. And then whoever handles the county commission Facebook site often shares our stuff.
Well, I was wondering, especially with pesticides, the agriculture community, you know, soil conservation, ag, you know, it'd be good to discuss it with them, because you think farms would have beaucoup of pesticides.
That, that has, in the past, been our largest supporter of the pesticide collection program, has been the agriculture community. This year, all nine people were residents, bringing stuff that I'm, you know, I just, I'm moving, moving away, and I've got all this stuff to get rid of, kind of thing. Stream cleanup, you can see it there on the chart, the number of bags and tires and such for, for last year. We pulled 150 bags, 204 bulky items, 216 tires from the counties, creeks, and lakes last year.
What's the weirdest thing you ever pulled?
Well, this year, the oddest thing was not an item. It was, there's a log jam on the Apeken Creek of immense proportion, and we found it. I've never, I can't imagine a log jam that big.
Where was it?
It's upstream, you know, where Route 9, where Apeken goes under to Route 9. It's upstream from there about a mile, and it's as long as a football field. It's huge. And I made some phone calls to let some folks downstate know about it and never heard back, but there's an awful lot of trash in amongst it.
I'm sure.
The Corps of Engineers needs to know.
It would take something like that. It is a monster. It is layers. I mean, you can, you can stand on the logs and be 30 feet in the air above the water. It's a monster thing.
Geez. We had a large one at, just south of Blairton on the Apeken a number of years ago, but not, not near that proportion.
This, this, I have some video on my phone. If you'd love to see it sometime, I'll show it to you, but it's, it's, it's a big one.
It's down on the short road, right?
Yeah, not far from there, yeah.
That's who needs to handle it. There's the Corps of Engineers, for sure.
Okay, yeah, I called, I think it was the West Virginia Conservation Agency or something, and it never heard back.
Yeah, I just happened to think of that.
Okay. I may reach out for contact information if you happen to know.
There was an office in Pittsburgh.
Yeah, we're still out of the Pittsburgh region, area, area, I think it's called Pittsburgh Office.
Whoever cleans it or removes it, I'd love to be downstream to collect all that trash. I just, there's maybe 100 bags of stuff in there, yeah, everything.
It's huge.
So that was the odd thing this year. I think all combined, maybe the...
And Clint, you worked on Winston Stormwater District as well.
Right, right, great point. Yeah, great, great point is that that program, the stream cleanup program, is funded from the stormwater fee.
Yeah.
They, they allocate $12,000. We have an interagency agreement between the two. They have a, the MS4 requirement that this happens. And of course, we would be the only county in West Virginia that would have that requirement. So they fund us $12,000 a year. And what we do is we hire a couple high school youth to join me or other, other board members, and we go out, simply go out in canoes, and when the weather's right, we pull trash and tires and put them in the canoes.
What streams do you hit? Do you hit Back Creek, Apeken Creek?
Yes, yes. Tuscaraway, we do Sleepy Creek Lake, and we just rotate it around. You know, sometimes, and when it rains, the Apeken may be high and Back Creek may be fine. Or maybe both those creeks will be up, and, you know, Sleepy Creek Lake will be fine. So we just, based on, it's a, it's a game day decision where we're going to go. We get some low water like we had this summer. We can, we like to focus on the Apeken because there's more trash there than there is in other streams. So ideally, we like to hit the Apeken over and over and over. Let me see what else I've got in front of you. You've got the roadside cleanup program that I'm sure the commission is fully aware of that, is working, working very well. Kudos to Mike Lang and, and that, that group. And then you, Jim, you asked about pesticide. Toward the end there, there, there is a chart specific for pesticide, and you could, you can see it just barely made the chart, the, the weight for that, for that year.
Advertising is everything.
It is. And I totally agree with that. And we're all over Facebook because it's free, and going on the radio because it's free. And we do a little bit of paid advertising in one day in, one day a month in the Martinsburg Journal. But we had to make tough decisions with our budgets, and that's just one thing that...
Should you contact Matt about that?
You, you talk, you contact the Adams, skilled, challenging, dedicated people that was...
Okay, okay. Will do. Be happy. Yeah, thank you. There is a slide here at the very end on Insorge. So I, the former Insorge building, I think you deserve an update on that. The situation with that building's ever-changing, so this is the update for the moment. The board reached a point in our termination, we had a lease agreement with Insorge, and there were certain steps in it we had to execute. And we've executed all those steps, and, you know, legal counsel has worked with us to make sure we did that right. And so we've advanced to a point where we own the building. We used to just own the land. So we own the land and now the building, and so we had now an additional cost of having to insure that building. So what we don't own is the equipment in the building. So we tried to figure out a way to use the building, generate revenue without touching the equipment. And we came up with a two-step appro, a two-step approach. One was, the first step was what we called short-term. And Apple Valley was a great, submitted a proposal to use that large room, I think that some of you have been in there, there's a giant room in there, to use that essentially like a transfer station. And they approached the state to get permits and, and... And they approached the state to get permits and we came to an agreement and there's a contract set up between the Solid Waste Authority and Apple Valley to use it. However, Apple Valley can't use it until they get responses from the Public Service Commission and from the DEP. The Public Service Commission did respond that they did not have any permit requirements for what we were trying to do. Certificate of need would have been the big question there, right? And so, that was a good thing. However, the private landfill in Hedgesville was offended by that and they have, they were offended that the PSC said you don't need a permit and they have appealed that decision to the West Virginia Supreme Court. Yeah. So, that topic, they also asked the PSC to issue a stay on their decision and the PSC refused. So, in theory, the certificate of need question remains that they don't need a permit unless the Supreme Court changes it.
When you say transfer station, what do you mean?
It would take small trucks and put it in large trucks.
And then what happens to them?
And then Apple Valley would market the large truck to a landfill somewhere, whoever wins their contract, probably LCS. But, yeah, the hearings before the Supreme Court are scheduled in March. The other permit that's required is from the DEP and...
We know how long that takes.
They told us back around Thanksgiving, it'd take a week.
Oh.
And it still hasn't happened.
They didn't tell you which Thanksgiving?
Yeah, last Thanksgiving, yeah. So, I mean, we're operating under the hope that maybe next week, maybe the week after, maybe the week after, that short-term RFP can start.
So, is there any chance of it becoming a, other than a transfer station?
Yes, absolutely. That's our end goal.
I know it's your end goal.
We've issued an RFP request for what we call long-term and there's, excuse me, there's about 10 or 12 companies that are looking at submitting proposals to restore the place to run fuel again. And I'm giving tours...
I assume with multiple customers instead of...
Yeah, right, right. That's got to be solved, right? So, it'll take some time for the long-term to happen because we've got to evaluate the bids, award it, come up with an agreement. Then they've got to repair the damage to the cranes that was caused by the fires and by the time we're there, hopefully that short-term thing will have already stood up and we will have revenue back from Insorga. And so, we've made it seven months into this fiscal year with no revenue from Insorga.
Which brings up your second...
That, yeah, that brings up another topic. The council, last, this current fiscal year that we're in, you folks set aside $112,000, $125,000 in contingency in case we did not get funding from Insorga. We've not drawn any of that down. We did draw down the $63,000 that the council approved for recycling and $12,000 for litter control. And a request that I have is to be able to access that contingency fund for the current fiscal year. Now, we applied for a grant in the year and it was awarded, so we don't need anywhere close to that $112,000. We only need $40,000 to finish out this fiscal year. The rest of the funds that you folks set aside in contingency, we are not likely to So, I guess I'd need some kind of direction as to how to access or request $40,000 of that $112,000. Wouldn't be here if the permits were granted back in November, but we are.
It'd be just a letter requesting it from your board to administrator and to us.
Okay, all right, all right, awesome, easy enough. Now, for the fiscal year '25, we submitted a budget request of $190,000, $15,000 for litter control, and then $175,000 toward recycling, $175,000, $125,000 toward recycling. Again, that assumes no income from the Insorga operation. So, I would encourage the council to do what you did last year, set aside funds if you're inclined to, into a contingency fund because we may not need it, fingers crossed, that, you know, we would only need our normal funding level of about $60,000, $63,000.
Does that include not owning on Mondays?
Correct. We just feel it's prudent on our part to, we implemented cutbacks and we should stay with them until we have a guaranteed long-term funding process that doesn't rely on the tax dollar.
Yeah, because it sounds to me like through your report that consistency is huge with those when it comes to recycling.
Yeah, you can't say we're taking plastic and then turn them off and then turn them back on.
No, it's got to be consistent.
That just creates chaos, absolutely.
Now, with the equipment that's left in the old Insorga building...
Yeah.
...being that we don't own it or you all don't own it...
Right.
Are we charging rent for that being in there?
I can't answer that. Here's what I know is, legal counsel say the bondholders, the bank, US banks owns the equipment. And it would appear in our lease agreement that they have until the end of March of this year to remove it. If they don't, in theory, it's ours, but legal counsel doesn't believe they're going to agree with that.
There was a law passed, now this is residential renting, many few years ago, that if I had a tenant that moved out of their home and their home was financed by a bank, I had to notify the bank immediately to let them know that that tenant wasn't in there anymore, that next month's rent is due because the bank owned it, the bank had to pay it.
And that was done?
That was done, okay.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, the bondholders, the banks are very well aware of this situation, absolutely. And so, as you folks know, our attorney is Charlie Trump and when he gets back from the legislative session, one of the things we're going to lay in his lap is, okay, here's the end of March and here's the status of the situation. Some of the companies that are interested in the long-term have no interest in that equipment. They have their own equipment, they have their own technology. Some can use some of it. There is also a situation of the sheriff has posted a notice out there that it's, the taxes are past due for that equipment. Somebody's got to pay that or presumably the sheriff can auction it.
If you all end up owning it, what are you going to do, scrap it?
Whoever we award the long-term, we would follow their, if they need it, it would stay. If they don't, we would sell it. And quite frankly, from my perspective, I can't speak for the board on this because we haven't discussed it. If we do sell it, we do scrap it, somebody is, that money should go to the county for the back taxes that are due, I mean...
So, all the tools and everything is still...
Yeah, it is, yeah, right down to wrenches.
I knew it was full of stuff.
Several million-dollar pieces of equipment sitting there. We've worked really hard with the help of Apple Valley to security, you know, put people there, turn, get the lights on, get cameras up and things like that and considering all that building's been through, it's in pretty good shape except for the cranes. Cranes are trashed.
Really, the overhead cranes are...
Both overhead cranes were right above the fires by sheer coincidence.
Torched.
That was spontaneous combustion.
Yeah.
Anthony, you've got to come. Yeah, so, I work with Clint and with the sheriff and the straining, well, the building, the property, everything. Just, the strike is just a way to collect taxes, usually for personal property because real property goes tax sale, where, hey, you can't remove this from the county until these taxes are paid. We could come in, share, and auction this. We didn't want to get it ahead of Solid Waste Authority. If they could use it, if they could pay entitled to it and do whatever they want with it. It's a few hundred thousand dollars in taxes, so it's real money, but if it's something that they want, the sheriff commission to kind of move forward with and going in and removing some of the equipment, selling it and satisfying the taxes, we would put the bondholders back in, bid on it.
Very good.
Yeah, and I want to thank your legal counsel for his help and guidance on some of this. It's tricky, at least it is for me. I've never been there before, but March, April's going to be interesting.
I'm going to be with Eddie and Charleston early next week and I'm personally going to be at the DEP office checking on our stormwater permit while we still have one. And I'd be glad to talk about this too if you wanted to.
Absolutely.
It's a permit for Apple Valley just to be able to use that building?
Yes, yeah, and they'll...
As a transfer station?
Yes, if you use the right term, they will refer to it as a transfer station even though it's not a commercial facility, it's just Apple Valley's waste. You and I couldn't use the facility. So, it's really technically called waste consolidation, but they will talk in terms...
And you all submitted this application along that...
Well, it came from Apple Valley and it was in the, it was before Thanksgiving. It was, yeah.
Well, rename it to Apple Valley Waste Holding Facility.
I think the paperwork says it's, it becomes Berkeley County Resource Recovery Facility because it's our building. And when they filled out the paperwork, that was the name that was put on. There's no guarantee that Apple Valley wins the long-term contract.
Right.
So...
Okay.
Thank you, Clint. Any other questions?
We appreciate the job you all do, believe me.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. It's, I've been there a long time, I've got good boards, there's one of them, John Christensen, right here behind me, good board members.
The board members are out there, I mean, I went there on a holiday, I went there on a Monday once and so I've learned not to do it again, so.
Oops.
I went there one day and, no, it was a work day and Clint's there working. He said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I take a day off work because I called in sick to get to the rental place." That's a kind of, these folks are just volunteered. Another few employees they have aren't paid well either. I think it's an important service to our community and I would hate to think about what our community would look like without you.
Wow, thank you.
It'd be an embarrassment.
And so, sometimes it is even with you in existence.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's our own citizens' goal.
Yeah, it is.
Donors' sales.
Maybe on the Marylanders.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good one.
All righty, anything else, anybody?
Anything else for me? Gary, I'll be sending you a letter, okay?
Yeah, contact Matt.
Right, absolutely. I'll take free PR anywhere I can get it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I'm going to go in the executive session.
I have a motion to go in executive session for personnel. Personnel.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, we're in executive session.
Okay, we are out of executive session and no action is going to be taken. It is just all discussion. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. It has been one whale of a meeting and I'm ready to ask for recess.
We are in recess.